Welcome, everyone. I am Sarah Lasser with Aspen Chamber Resort Association. We are recording this ACRRA election forum today to be aired on grassroots. Do you want to remind everyone about early voting, which is already open? And available Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The city has also added a new Dropbox for contact free voting available in front of City Hall. And on Election Day weekend, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at City Hall, voters can vote in person. So that information has also been added to the chat box for you all. Thank you so much for joining us today. We appreciate our city council candidates joining us, and I will turn it over to Debbie Braun, President and CEO of Aspen Chamber Resort Association, who will moderate our election forum today. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Sarah, and thanks all of you for joining us today. I went back and looked at all the questions you've been answering, and I really don't know that there's much more left out there. So I thought I would take this opportunity to view this forum as a job interview, which is really what you all are on right now. So I hope my questions might be a little different. But in the spirit of you applying for the job for city council. But before we get started, I only think it's fair. We're going to check your time management skills right now. So what I'm really going to ask each of you, and I'll call on you individually, is to give me a 30-second elevator speech on who you are. And Jimbo, if you don't mind, I'll start with you since you're right there on my screen.
You got it. So what I am is a 23-year resident of Aspen, Colorado, who wants to put myself out there and available to be willing to work for the average, everyday local, and then also for the people who come in are tourists that we are completely reliant upon. And I want to increase that relationship or enhance that relationship between the two of us and see what we could do to make sure we keep the locals local and to keep the tourists coming and bringing money into our economy.
Great. Thank you, Jimbo. Hi, John. What about you? A 30-second elevator speech on who John is.
I am a 40-year local with roots in the valley. My family lives here. I have a broad range of employment in the valley, which I think gives me an advantage to understanding how other workers feel about the commute and about employee housing and about every issue that faces Aspen. One of my main concerns is about the environment, because every single component, every single issue that's going to come before council has an environmental component. And I think we can do more to address those concerns, what with wildfires burning closer and closer to Aspen as time goes on.
Thanks, John. Hi, Sam.
Hey, Debbie. So I'm a volunteer firefighter. I'm a response advocate of victims of sexual assault and domestic violence. I'm the lead case investigator COVID in the county. I believe I have a lot to offer with those regards as far as being a strong community member. I was out there fighting wildfires this summer. Being the lead case investigator, I believe I'm the best person to lead us through and out of the pandemic. And I just have a very pragmatic mindset as far as how to find tangible solutions to real problems.
Great. Thank you very much. Hi, Kimbo.
Hey, Debbie. Hi, everyone. Thank you. My name is Kimbo Brown Sherata. I am a South African who has been here for about 16 years. I'm a working mom of a young child who goes to Wildwood School. I am a full-time financial professional as well as a small business owner. And I've been involved in this community for as long as I can remember in leadership roles from both the nonprofits and other sectors. I bring people together, I build consensus, and I get stuff done. And there's my timer, 30 seconds.
Thank you. Hi, Ward.
Good afternoon. My name is Ward Hollenstein. I am a 44-year resident that gains one year every year. I've been on city council for the last three and a half years. Been politically active and engaged my whole life. Aside from being on city council, I also serve as a rep on Rafta, CCLC, Core, Aspen's Sister Cities, Wheeler Board, and Aspen Snowmass Nordic Council. I have a breadth of knowledge. My experience on city council, I think, sets me well for continuing in a continuance of governance. And I don't have a stopwatch, so my screen went dark on my phone.
That's all right.
I think what I can differentiate myself from the other candidates is my experience with all the issues and the time on city council.
Thank you. So I noticed that each of you, in a lot of your responses, talked about business. So I was just going to ask, Jimbo, can you name the top three employers in Aspen?
Did you ask Kimbo or Jimbo?
Jimbo. Top three employers in Aspen.
I would say Aspen Ski Company and the City of Aspen and I don't know, I would guess probably one of the construction companies, but I couldn't tell you which one.
All right, Sam, why don't you give it a try?
Aspen Ski Co., the City of Aspen, maybe the St. Regis has a lot of employees.
I would say yes, ding ding ding. Certainly, the hotels have a large number of employees. Kimbo, name that top business issue that you want to tackle alongside ACRRA.
I think we, as a council, need to start getting out of the way and being as helpful as possible when people are trying to start businesses. That I think is the biggest feedback that I've received from the majority of business owners, that they would not open a business again if they had to, because it was just impossible. So I'd like to, I'm not sure if this exists, somebody was telling me in some way, shape, or form it does, but kind of a business concierge. So if you come to town, there is one person whose kind of job performance is tied to the happiness of the new business owners. And really, just how can we be of service?
Great, thank you. Yes, I know the City of Aspen had Jim Pomeroy doing that as the Business Navigator, and they've got a business section on the website. Hi, John.
Hi.
Same question for you. What is that top business issue that you're not going to, the city won't be able to get done on its own, that'll need to partner with ACRRA?
Needing to partner with ACRRA? I'm not sure if ACRRA is into partnering with the city on employee housing, but I'd just like to quote what Debbie Braun said in the newspaper recently. "One of the key challenges our local businesses face is the ability to attract and retain qualified employees across a broad span of industries due to the lack of affordable housing for both individuals and families. All housing for our workforce helps, as we have seen local rental units converted into short-term rentals for visitors." And that actually goes hand in hand with, this is part of my campaign platform, is we need to address the VRBO problem as well, because they have an unfair advantage over our small local lodges. They don't have to pay as much taxes. They provide no parking. They provide no housing for their workers that clean their rooms.
Thanks, John. Ward, let's kind of move into that. Do you think your city staff and your city council is managing the short-term rental market correctly?
I don't know if anybody's managing STRs correctly. We're making an attempt. We're trying to set policies that are consistent with all of the different providers, VRBO, Airbnb, and a myriad of other ones, and have the same policies applied. The biggest step that we've taken recently is having that all STRs must have a business license and which costs $150 in a license and list their property. We have a new software that scrapes all of the listings and all of the STRs and we use that to find out who are the outliers. About 25% of the lodges are not, or STRs are not signed up, aren't collecting lodging and sales taxes. But more importantly for STRs, what it does is it removes free-market housing for local workers, because there's so much money to be made in the STR market that a lot of those units are no longer in the long-term affordable housing for local workers. The big advantage with the new ordinance that we have is it's going to give us an idea of what the hotbeds are with the advent and proliferation of STRs. We don't really know how many beds are actually out there. So we've been basing our growth on the traditional methods, the traditional lodges. And there are perhaps over 1,000 STRs out there that aren't accounted for. So we need the numbers to know how we can address how many new lodge beds are needed, development along those lines. And I don't want to hog the conversation here, so cut me off at any point. But we are making efforts and continuing, I think we made it, and I really pushed that everybody that rents a unit should have a business license. And I think some of the lodging operators felt that that was inappropriate. I thought it was an equity issue that somebody renting a small apartment at Hunter Creek should have to pay the same fee as a $400,000 condo or million-dollar condo at Aspen Square or the Gant or any one of the other condo hotels.
Thank you. Jimbo, I'm going to ask you that same question. Do you think the city's managing the short-term rental market correctly?
It's a tricky question, because I think we do need to keep track of like the VRBO and then the private rentals a little bit closer. But as far as how well we manage it, it's another question. I've not been involved with it, but I'm sure we could find ways to improve without a doubt.
Great. And then, John, I'm just going to build up on that question for you. Which steps should the city take to bring all the short-term rentals into compliance and collect the lodging tax?
I think Ward pretty much answered that question already. It is an issue that is being worked on. Obviously, the software will help get us to where we need to be, just in identifying the properties that aren't paying the taxes that they should be. I'd just like to, if elected to council, I'd like to fulfill getting that done so that the RBOs don't have the advantage over our local small lodges that they have right now.
And when we talk about VRBOs, we're talking about residents. We're not talking about a big company. We're actually talking about a bunch of individuals. So, Sam, do you think they're managing that short-term rental market correctly right now? And do you have any feedback?
Yeah, so I'd like to point out that it's just different business models for short-term rentals versus lodging. So I'd like to respect the fact that like a place like I Trip Vacations has a different business model than like St. Regis. And with that, I think it's really difficult to, like, you know, we can register the short-term rentals, but I think it's one of those things where we can mitigate the problem that we have now. But I think it's most important that into the future, that we don't add to our short-term rental list without it being done in a proper way. It's tough to solve this problem. I think it'd be easier to prevent it in the future.
Okay, thank you. And Kimbo, I'm going to just give you kind of a last word on that, and then we're going to move on to a different subject. You know, how's the city tackling that short-term rental market? And then, do you have any specific steps that the city should take to bring everybody into compliance?
I think the city's doing fine to have a first step at tackling what we call a problem. But I do think in the future, instead of taxing and making people, instead of sort of sticking it to people, let's incentivize our free-market homeowners and rental units to, let's rather try and make it the highest and best use to have employees in there. There are programs in Gasp, Vale, and other places like Summit County, where they're bringing programs forth where they're actually incentivizing people to re-convert them, for lack of a better word, into full-time housing through leveraging Vale money, which, by the way, they don't have a RIT. So they don't have this massive housing development fund. And they're incentivizing by actually buying deed restrictions. In Vale, it's called the Indeed Program. And then in Summit County, they're doing a different program. But it's really, I'd rather see, I think people want to do in general the best thing for themselves economically, but also the best thing for the community. And but economically, people need to make the best choice for themselves. And so it comes down to a monetary answer.
Thank you. I'll go to a really easy one. This will be a rapid round. Ward, how do you resolve conflict? Fast, patient?
Listening, perhaps empathy, realization that the other point of view has validity and acknowledging that sometimes conflict cannot be resolved, but if it exists and is acknowledged, it can at least be done while people can be friends to each other, with each other.
Tackle the problem, not each other. Okay, I like it. Jimbo, who do you feel like you closely align with on the council today with your policies? If you were to look for an advocate to be with you if you were elected, who do you think you are most aligned with?
I would have to go with our mayor, Tori, just because of his authentic concern for the community and his desire to help things be better for not just us as locals, but for the tourists coming in as well. And that he wants to see everybody succeed on an economic way, but also in a personal way, that we can continue to improve our way of life that we have here in Aspen. And so I'd love to be able to continue and carry on with that.
Great. John, I'm going to ask you that same question. Who do you think policy-wise you will align with on the council?
Personally, I think most of the existing council. I know everybody on council at this point. I've known Rachel for going on three decades, Tori for 15, Skippy for the last several years. I voted for him in the last election. Ward, I just got to know recently, but as far as all the current candidates are concerned, I would say that I'm most closely aligned with Ward.
Okay. Sam, what about you?
So I've worked a lot with Skippy recently. I think we have like very different ways of going about things, but his passion for enthusiasm to solve real issues is great. Anne Mullins, I spoke with, and I thought her care for timeliness on issues was amazing. And then as far as the other candidates goes, the easiest answer is Kimbo. I think her passion and her drive and her ideas are just like second to none as far as the other people running in this race. And I'd love to be able to be elected to council later.
Kimbo.
Sure. Not really a hard one. I think that at the end of the day, what we really need to do is get a majority on council. So in any given issue, coming to a middle ground that pleases all sides is very important. I get on very well. Tori, we've spoken about many things like housing and childcare, and he's always available. I'm not quite sure where he stands on decision-making from a leadership perspective. I get on super well with Ward. We've gone back and forth a lot of many times on various issues, and I appreciate him taking the time to really engage and get to the bottom of, in particular, Next Gen's perspective on things. And then, of course, Skippy, I've worked with him for many years, and that guy, he may come across to people as a, you know, the avo toast on Instagram vibe that people may not like, but the guy works harder than anybody I know in terms of bringing solutions to our community. In terms of current candidates, super impressed with Sam, love John's perspective on our town. And I was really quite impressed with Mark earlier at Squaw Night. I think we'd be lucky with anyone, guys, let's be honest.
Well, it's not really lucky that we'll be with them, but what I'm trying to get to is people that you will align with, because most of the time, you're right, Kimbo, the council has not been aligned in their decision-making, and it's been more adversarial. So I would ask in reverse, who do you think, starting with you, Ward, that you'll have the most difficult bringing to maybe your side of an issue?
Assumed in your question is that there will be a difference of opinion. I'm not sure that that's going to be the case. I think that so many of us are aligned on what is important to Aspen, that they're not, there might be approaches, differences in approach. And honestly, I haven't worked with a lot of the people that are running. Kimbo and I have had we've had differences of opinion, but we both respect each other's views. And that's, I think, really important is to acknowledge, to acknowledge the validity of different arguments. So I can't say that I would have a hard time getting along with anybody, because I pride myself in being able to get along to not do the best I can, not to personalize an issue, trying to find common ground. And if there is no common ground, you just accept that it's going to be that way.
Okay. Jimbo, I'm just looking for a management style. Do you micromanage, or are you more hands-off?
I'm more prone to be a delegator and then find out who is surrounding me and has what their strengths are and to play into that, because I know my strengths are different than other people's strengths. And then to look for other people's gifts and to hopefully encourage them to be a part of the team. And that's all I want to do is be a part of the team that I see as Aspen City Council, is a team of people, not just a council of people.
Thank you. John, what's your management style?
Not sure I have a management style, but this is what I can promise I will bring to the table. I love to read, so I will be very prepared. I'm a very good listener. You can ask, I'm well-known around town, and you can ask anybody. That I get along well with everybody I come into contact with. I'm very open and honest. And that is what I will bring to the council table is listening, being prepared, and working well with others in a polite, empathetic manner.
Thank you. Sam, have you ever managed a budget over $1 million before?
No, I don't believe I have.
Okay. Jimbo, have you managed a million? I mean, cities is much bigger. I thought I'd just start at a million. Have you managed a million-dollar budget before?
I have not managed a million-dollar budget before. I don't have that kind of experience.
Okay. John, what about you?
Another kind of difficult question. I mean, if you talk about my personal finances and my wife's, we actually do have those sums of money tied up in my wife's family's real estate and so on. Do I manage her money? No, but we definitely talk about what we do with it and how it's going to be done, and we have to talk to her family members about it as well. So I do have experience with large budgets, yes.
Thank you. Kimbo, $1 million or more, have you been managing a budget of that size?
My day job is to manage many millions of dollars of people's money from a financial planning standpoint. But from the purest sense of the word, from a business day-to-day, the answer is no, we have a small band business, so that's the goal, is to get a million-dollar revenue at some point, but not quite yet.
Ward?
Yes.
What is the city's budget?
Well, the numbers with transfers and governmental transfers, with all the different municipal meandering to somewhere around $140 million. And the budget process, I think, has improved every year, particularly since Sarah has been the manager, that the presentation by staff is really outstanding. There's continuity between the different departments. And then zero-based accounting on a number of departments has made it really easy to look at, well, not really easy, but make it understandable when you look at the individual departments, their funding. It's a hurdle that everybody that comes on council needs to understand, to adapt to, to listen well, to ask questions. And the decisions you make during the budget cycle affect the whole year. You'll have spring and fall supplementals, and then you'll have COVID-19 that comes along and throws everything out the window. So, yeah, I'm pretty comfortable with the budget now. The budget book is quite large, and I have it digitally, and you can go in and look at what the capital expenditures are, where the revenues are, where the expenses are. Yeah, I've dealt with the budget now, I think, four budget cycles.
Okay, thank you. Really, the last little interview question. You all are being elected by a constituency, which is the residents of the City of Aspen. There's a couple different management styles. Some people are elected and they represent, take all the feedback, try to distill it down and represent that opinion. Others feel that they are elected and that they should push forward what their platform is. That's why they got elected. I'm just curious, and I'm going to start with you, Kimbo. Which way do you tend, will you tend to go if you're elected? Will you be listening to all the constituents, or will you have set your platform and be pushing forward in that direction?
The answer is, as an example, everybody runs on housing, right? And nobody really gets housing done. So I am committed to bringing creative solutions that don't necessarily include building, as I mentioned earlier. From the childcare perspective, I will certainly push forward. I will say Tori ran on childcare two years ago, and not much has happened since then. So things that frustrate me are people running on things and then nothing happening. That's something that I've heard in the street a lot. To conclude, I will push forward to John's point in Squaw Night, that we, as a community, need to reengage with Aspen Area Community Plan, because every single decision up to this point is wrought with infighting and people and development versus not. We don't know as a community where we want to go in the next five, 10, 25 years. So I will certainly push that forward as a pet project until we can get to there. And then I'll listen to everyone, always listen. But, you know, we need to figure out where we're going.
Okay. Sam, what about you?
Yeah, politics is the art of compromise, and I definitely don't think the tyranny of the majority is a great way of going about things. I will definitely fight for the things I have on my platform, like Kimbo said, of childcare, housing, and all these things. But I'm the type of person that sets tangible goals, so I won't put up with stagnation if we said we're all going to agree on something. We will find something, we will get it done, but definitely not going to do it in an obtrusive way that's going to anger too many people. But, I mean, communication is everything. So the leadership style I would take is communicating as best I could, especially with people that disagreed with me, and finding that common ground, because doing nothing is not great, is not good for everyone, but doing something is at least a step in the right direction, especially with like the Aspen Area Community Plan and setting the proper goals that the city needs.
John, what about you?
Well, gosh, everybody's talking about the Aspen Area Community Plan. I'd just like to say it's a very important document that spells out very clearly what we should be doing as a community and what our goals are as a community. It was written by local representatives in years past, and it's updated every 10 years. We're about ready to get a new one done in the next year, year and a half. That's really it. We really do need to follow the Aspen Area Community Plan closer than we have been.
So you'll follow the Aspen Area Community Plan before the constituents or before your platform?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been so long since the question was asked. I forgot about that.
I want to see how long you guys can focus before you lose. No, I'm just joking. Yeah, no, it's really more about, will you sort of, as a leader, will you take your platform and bring it forward? Or are you more going to listen to what your constituents are asking of you? I'm sure everybody's going to do a little bit of both, but where do you tend to land more with your platform, which sounds like Aspen Area Community Plan is important to you? Or do you feel like that aligns with what your constituents want? Or do you feel like that aligns with what your constituents want?
I do. That's about, that's just what I was going to say. One of the reasons I decided to run was because of my involvement two years ago against the overdevelopment of the Lift 1A corridor. I was asked two years ago if I would consider running. At the time, I wasn't interested. But in the ensuing two years, several things have pushed me in the direction of running. And the main thing was I don't think the, our long-term local residents have been listened to. And yes, I think our long-term residents' wishes for the future align very closely with the Aspen Area Community Plan. So I will be listening to both. My constituents are very important to me and that is the principal reason why I threw my hat in the ring.
Thank you. How about you, Jimbo?
I definitely want to be an advocate for the people of Aspen, the constituents and to not push my own agenda. I mean, I've got plenty of ideas, but the role of the city councilman is to definitely represent the people of the city of Aspen and make sure that we are moving forward with whatever the people want to do as opposed to just what I want to do.
Great. And Ward, what was your style for these last four years?
Well, I listened to everybody. I represent everybody. I get a lot of calls and communications with people that disagree with me. I represent them as well. I try to incorporate their beliefs into policy. That's the biggest thing the city council does is set policy and then staff implements that. I think every new homeowner should at closing be presented with a copy of the AACP. I think it's a visionary, an advisory document. It's not a regulatory document. We aspire to the goals and the values of the AACP. But in direct answered your question, I represent everybody. You get on council and I was, I thought I was well versed on the issues, but there are a lot of issues that you don't know anything about. Last night we had a pretty long discussion about the electric delivery charge and the increase in that, that fee. Before I got on council, I couldn't tell you what an electric or water utility delivery fee was. But there's so many things that you have to get to know and received a number of phone calls from people that, seniors that were upset with the increase in the electric utility delivery fee. And so last night we were talking about setting a larger forum for discussions with the senior committee, community and how we can make living in Aspen on a fixed income more affordable. So you have to listen to everybody. If you go in with a set agenda, I think quickly you're going to find that you're just creating a silo for yourself. You have to be, you have to be involved on all of the issues.
Thank you. I'm going to do a small depart and talk about arts and culture. The arts and cultural community, which are really a summer backbone to tourism, were really decimated last year with no events. So I'm going to start with you, Sam. How will you support Aspen's arts and cultural community and help them build back their programming?
I think step one is getting through and out of the pandemic, but even so, this summer, I think we're going to be in a much better place than we were last summer with the fact that COVID will still be around, but we'll have at least our most vulnerable people vaccinated. And I think the best way I can support arts and culture is by making sure that their events are set up so that they can run them as normal as possible.
Great. Kimbo?
Much like, much, much to Sam's, I agree with Sam. I did hear anecdotally that some arts and culture organizations did not receive the same level of funding from the grant cycle from the city of Aspen this year. So I don't know the answer to that, but I will delve into that. But at the end of the day, it's making sure that people feel welcome and can be in Aspen safely and gather medium to large groups safely. I think it most likely will end up taking care of itself over time as long as the organizations can hang in there over the next six months to a year.
Hi, John. How are you going to support the arts and cultural organizations and help them bring back that programming?
Well, again, I would mimic Sam and Kimbo's response in, to making sure that any events that we have this summer are compliant with our health regulations before we solve the COVID problem. Another thing I'd like to explore though is trying to do what Carbondale's done with their arts program. They have a very successful outdoor art program where artists donate their work for a year to be displayed outdoors around the city of Carbondale. And it's highly successful. A lot of the artists gain exposure that they didn't have before. And I would like to see that implemented here in Aspen, mimicking Carbondale's outdoor art program.
Thank you. Jimbo?
Oh. I would just like to, you know, reiterate, it's kind of hard coming in at this part of the conversation, but I believe that we need to follow like state and federal guidelines for COVID responsibility on our part, but then also promote as much as we can. And I'd love everybody to take self-responsibility as far as how much they partake of and how much they contribute to. I believe our music school is pretty well-funded, as is our art, local art programs are. And I think we are fortunate enough that we have the people that do come here enough that do support us in a financial way and then do all that we can to support both the local musicians and the incoming musicians and the artists in every way we can, as long as we stay compliant to make sure that we don't continue to, that we try and end the pandemic that we're in right now.
Thank you. Ward, I know you took down some notes, so I'm going to change the question.
I was so ready for this.
Yeah, no, that's not how this works.
I was just struggling. I was just doodling.
Well, I have a question I think you'll really appreciate because it's something that Accra and the city have talked about frequently. And I'm actually going to ask this of all of you. Do you support events on public parks? And how are you going to manage those multiple priorities?
Signature events, yes. I think that the food and wine classic brings so much to the community. This year will be in the, in the fall, which is a departure. Really look forward to that, to kicking off the season. Food and wine really is the generator for the majority of income for the lodges in the month of June. I do support some of the signature events, how they recover, how the, particularly Wagner Park is which everybody seems to focus on, the rebounding of the soil, losing it for a period of time as it gets resodded after food and wine. That's probably the largest impact on any of the public facilities is food and wine. But it's, I've seen so many times on council, it's a balancing act. And you have to balance the economic sustainability of Aspen with the community of Aspen. And I think that the community of Aspen benefits from events like food and wine. Just about anybody that wants to go to some of the events can volunteer and see some great stuff at food and wine. I'm not a big cooker, connoisseur, but when I go, it's just that the people that go to it are really enthused and it's a great event. Yeah, to a limited degree, you know, the volleyball in the Rugger Fest, those are community events and they're on city parks. So I do support it, but I don't think that, you have to take it kind of event by event, but I really do support the use of it because it benefits the whole community when we use our public facilities for private events.
Great. Kimbo, do you support events on the public parks?
I remember. So yes, and I kind of go back to the, there was a group that was trying to activate Wagner Park this winter that presented to council and, and they were, and they were denied. And I think most, the reason for that was, it was, it was not going to be fully publicly accessible. So the answer is, A, as long as a portion of the, of the event is accessible to the entire community for an affordable or free visitation per se or whatever accessibility. And then let's activate Rio Grande Park some more, where it's literally right outside the core. And I know that there, there would be the.
Nobody wants Rio Grande.
What's that?
I said, nobody wants Rio Grande for some crazy reason. They all want that Wagner Park.
Yeah, well, there must be something that people want to do there, right? So let's, let's do it. But you know, if you think about Telluride and they have, they have festival fatigue every single weekend of the summer is, town park is taken up by a festival of some sort. So I don't think we should necessarily go that way, but I think there's a happy medium.
Sam?
Yeah, you always want to prevent the tyranny of the masses. This is why we have regulation. I mean, I'm somewhat of a libertarian by nature, but this is one of those things where I'd want to work with the Parks and Recreation Department to potentially permit public usage so that it could be done in a safe, sustainable way and enhance our community.
How about you, Jimbo?
I was wondering if you could repeat that question for me one more time, please?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you support events on the public parks in town?
Absolutely. I support events in the public parks in town. I mean, the more we could use them, the better off they are. We get more people coming to Aspen and the more people we have coming here, that means more tourism dollars and that's our economy. And so whatever we can do to facilitate that, I say we go for it.
Great. And then John, I'll finish you up. Public parks and special events.
I, yes, as everybody stated, food and wine generates a tremendous amount of income for not just the hotels, but really for the whole town. Our restaurants benefit, hotels. Everything benefits from food and wine. I do think that there is some of what Kimbo pointed out, festival fatigue. Do we need to rent out our parks as much as we do? I don't think so. I think we could definitely limit the amount of events that we, that we present. And again, I think private events should be a no-go. If the public isn't accepted to these events, then that's clearly exclusionary and I don't think it should be allowed. But yes, overall, I think, you know, they are our public parks and they should be used to benefit the whole town.
Great. There have been, the city has been working on water issues and they have been hosting open houses for, to obtain feedback on water rights, water issues. I just want to know if any of you have attended any of the open houses for the water issues. Ward?
I have not, but I've been deeply involved in our water, water issues. The water storage rights that we've, we've moved out of Castle Maroon, acquisition of space where we can have water storage. The nine hours of water storage we have now is not adequate. We need to have water storage for drought situations and our water is, is, our water supply comes directly from Castle and Maroon. And when we've had avalanches, it really puts our town at risk. But no, I have not attended one of those yet.
John, what about you?
I have not attended any of the water meetings either. I have avidly read every article about that. Brent Gardner-Smith, who writes for Aspen Journalism, is a friend of mine. And I'm, you know, super concerned about the environment and about our water issues, especially with the advent of forest fires. And Ward's right, a nine-hour supply of fresh water isn't enough. Especially, as he pointed out, I was going to mention this, but he beat me to the punch several years ago. And this has happened, not just one winter I've been here, but several winters where avalanches have dammed both Castle and Maroon creeks and have cut off our water supply in the height of winter when we have the most amount of tourists possible in town. I think obviously it needs to be looked at. We need a greater water supply. You know, our entire state of Colorado is in what's called exceptional drought conditions at this point. 50% of the American West is in severe drought conditions. So water is a very big concern of mine. It's part of the environment and that is really one of the main pillars of my campaign.
Jimbo, have you made any of the water work sessions?
Unfortunately, I have not made it to any of those water work sessions. And I'm always been concerned about, you know, what's going on with our water supply. And we need to definitely increase our water supply so we have more than nine hours. I agree with that. And also, like what John said, the fire danger and how we're going to deal with that in case a fire does come closer to Aspen than we ever have before. And then we need to understand our risk management plans as well, too. But that's another story. But I have not attended those meetings yet.
Okay, Sam?
I have not attended those meetings either, but I, my degree was also in sustainability. I've studied water supply extensively. That was a big part of my degree, especially in like GIS mapping. And we're in a unique situation being at the headwaters of a major river system. Obviously, you have issues if you have avalanches damming our two main water supplies. So I mean, that's another reason to look into the other creeks that we have, the Roaring Fork and Hunter Creek, and to make sure that we are prepared for any emergency situation. That's really the gist that I get of everything that is discussed here about this topic.
Thank you. And Kimbo, I'll let you finish us up. What do you think about what's going on with the water?
I did not attend any session, but it really just kind of highlights our, I did pass it along to our next gen constituents. But it highlights the fact that Aspen is in a pretty precarious situation in general when it comes to emergency management. How would we get people out of the valley if we had a real emergency, out of town if we had a real emergency? Don't want to bring up the bridge or the power plant road or any of that stuff, but it, it just highlights that. I'd also like to say that it's, it's worth us. And this kind of all comes back to, to John's point, climate change and those types of things. So leveraging the Aspen brand to the absolute, you know, best of our ability to try and effect change on a federal, national level from a policy perspective is really, is really what we should be pushing quite, you know, quite, quite strongly.
Great. Thank you. We're at about 57 minutes and I have about five more questions, but I'll try to just do one to two more questions and try to see how succinct I can get you all to be. If you could reverse any council implemented program or policy, what would that be? I'm going to start with you, John.
Well, really, it's an easy one. Obviously, we can't go back and undo the Lift 1A vote because the voters have spoken. But I will say, I think council voting to give the developers $4.36 million to do things that was already baked into their contract, I think that was a huge mistake. And that's why half the town voted against the Lift 1A corridor.
Okay. Jimbo, if you could reverse any council implemented program or policy, what would that be?
It would probably be the use of our funds for consultants coming in that we could use on our, use our own people and to figure out a way to not spend $200,000 on consulting fees, but rather use the people that we have and skill, you know, skill positions that are there and try and make better use for our money.
Okay. Sam?
I echo Jimbo by saying definitely the consultant fee, but when it comes to consultants, I would at least want some sort of proof that the fee that we pay them is going to pay off in the long run. I always think that's sort of an interesting thing. If you pay $4 million for a consultant for City Hall, you better get $4 million worth of something out of it. And then the other part that I think of like policy program is the jail trail. I would have voted against that. I think it's ridiculous to spend that money at this time for what's going to become like a shadow dungeon. for what's going to become like a shadow dungeon that doesn't even meet ADA requirements.
Okay, Kimbo?
I think it's more of sort of a philosophical question whereby the city believes that with the housing, with the Housing Development Fund that is funded by the RITs on an annual basis, that they should be the developers of said housing projects and, and not always, I will give them the credit that the Aspen Housing Partners is a very good step forward. But in general, I do not believe that the city should be responsible for building our affordable housing.
Okay. Ward, since you've been on council, is there anything that you wish you could reverse or change that was passed?
Well, there, there are a couple of them that weren't implemented under, while I've been on council, but I'd like to see change. Or at least a serious debate, one of which is workforce housing mitigation for small lodging rooms. The 2012 AACP identified the loss of small affordable lodges. And a previous council created an incentive so that people developing small and affordable, hopefully affordable, although we have no control over what the lodge rates are, but a smaller lodge room has to provide less workforce housing mitigation. For lift 1A, we, we honored that incentive and there will be a number of small lodge rooms created. That is probably the one thing that bothers me the most of what happened when I was on council, but it was not a policy that I initiated. There's one other one, and that's the HPC having final authority on land use cases. I both of these are coming up for council to, to discuss and review. I don't think that HPC should have final authority. The, the one that really bothers me the most is the Aspen Daily News Building that was approved with workforce housing mitigation in the building where it had been previously. HPC, there was a change. And somehow it came in front of HPC and they unilaterally changed that workforce housing mitigation to be a credit instead of onsite. And, and that, I just don't see that an appointed board should have that kind of authority to overrule an approval by the city council. So those are two things, workforce housing mitigation for smaller lodges. I understand the need for the smaller lodges, but we have to have a, we have to revisit that and for three years at least that I've been opposed to HPC final authority on land use issues. Being sent back to HPC, we can do that, but HPC is a final authority. And if they come back and say, we decided what we decided originally is right, city council can't overrule that. And I just don't think that's right.
Okay, I have just one last question and then we're going to finish up, but I'll start with you, Kimbo, ladies first this time. Are you familiar with five-star certification? And if you are, do you support it for indoor events?
I, I have been following the Accra emails, but I, I will be honest, I do not know the details around them. Again, conceptually, I think that the sooner we can safely get back to the belly up, the more mental health there will be around this town. So yes, conceptually, I think it would be wonderful, but I will admit that I haven't delved too deeply into the details, sorry.
Okay, Sam, are you familiar with the five-star certification program? And if so, would you support indoor events being included?
So yeah, in my job, I work a lot with the five-star certification program. I understand what it is. I just always think a lot of these programs are very idealistic rather than realistic. And a lot of the businesses have been doing them reluctantly, just because they're incentivized to do so, but they still are kind of upset about it. I definitely think we need to work hard towards getting back to being on indoor events. I think the game is changing with the fact that our most vulnerable people are being vaccinated. And I, I think that we're heading in the right direction, but I think businesses need to have more of a say of what's more realistic approach and especially because we need to get into the why of the matter. And a lot of the times that's missed and we need proper goal setting to make sure that that businesses reopen safely and that we do everything we can to keep them open. Because they're the ones who have suffered the most, thus everyone has suffered. That's what really matters in this town.
Jimbo, are you familiar with the five-star program? And if so, would you support them adding indoor events?
I am partially aware of what all the five-star program is about. And I'm in favor of it, but there's a couple of problems, like if you go into different levels of like red or orange, there's things like having a table not just be six feet apart, but 10 feet apart and that for some restaurants, that's not going to fly at all. They're, they're already small enough as it is and having limited amount of people come in. Whereas that might just actually put the final nail on the coffin and do them in. And so we got to see if there's any other ways. And I'd have to look into the qualifications for that. I'm in favor of that, just so we could keep our restaurants open. But I also think that we need to look at the specifics of it to be more helpful to our restaurants for sure.
Thank you. And then John?
Yes, I am familiar with the five-star program and I am for having indoor events, but with the caveat that we must continue to follow the Picking County Board of Health's recommendations. COVID is a relatively new phenomenon as, as far as world history goes and nobody's been through this before. So we're all flying by the seat of our pants. And I think everybody has done the very best job that they could with the information they have. I would urge to continue operating with science-based solutions. And again, following our Board of Health.
Great. Ward, I see you wrote down some notes, so I'm going to ask another question. I'm, I'm just joking. Are you familiar with five-star ward and would you allow indoor events to start being included under the five-star certification?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing about five-star, we're almost in blue. I mean, we're, we're teetering on blue, so that's really good. We, I think the best part about five-star is the MERV 16 or MERV air circulation filtration. I think I brought that up for city offices and our city offices are going to be MERV 16, which is like a, an N95 mask. And so better air filtration for all indoor events. And I would like to see the building codes of Aspen to reflect that in the future, that MERV 13 or 16 be incorporated. And I've got to say this on arts that we have to celebrate. We just have a new executive director that's coming from Longtree, who was announced yesterday. I sat in on her interview. She's outstanding. And for Kimbo, we, we identified the grants issues we commissioned to study and we had a report from that on Tuesday night. It should be in the pack and I really encourage you to take a look at that. Some great steps going forward for the grants and arts are a huge part of our, of our economy and the life and fabric of our town. Sorry, Debbie, I had to get that in.
Good for you, Ward. My very last question is, if you read both the papers today, the Chamber and the Chamber Board, along with its membership, is very actively wanting the traveler affidavit program to sunset early. Currently, it is in play until the April 30th and the public health, or the board, Public Health Board meets tomorrow to discuss this issue. I'd just like to ask each of you where you stand on the traveler affidavit program. And if you are in support of sunsetting the program, or if you believe it should stay to the end of April. And Ward, I'll just start with you and move across the screen.
Yeah, I supported it initially and I thought that it was a good idea. Maine has had that since last July, I think. The problem with an affidavit is nobody really is tasked with enforcing it. When, when Accra came out with their, their request to remove it, I emailed Tori and the lodging community as well, but I supported removing the traveler affidavit. I thought it would be particularly useful if other communities in the state enacted a similar type of affidavit, because it was not Aspen is really targeted. And I think they really were harmed by it. There's no nexus between traveler affidavit and bringing our indicators down. Our incident rate at 3,000 in January scared most people away. It was in the top 25 in the country. Traveler affidavit didn't bring that down. And I don't, I'm not sure that restaurants going to, to a red level brought it down. I think the, the the availability and detail of the data's collection, I don't think you can make those connections, a direct connection between a restaurant having limited life occupancy inside and the incident rates coming down. There's just, the information is incomplete and we have to do the best we can with the information we have. But I, I think that the small, the affidavit should be revoked. I communicated that to Tori. It just, I don't think it has, there's no enforcement of it. Maybe an advisory, but everybody should be aware of that anyway by now. So I support the removal of it.
Kimbo?
What Ward said? I think, honestly, I mean, honestly, Ward, you answered the question for everyone, I think. Yeah, the bottom line is we as a community are not willing to really enforce any of the rules that we set forth. And let's trust people, might be naive, but to do the right thing. Anecdotally, I have heard some friends who went to Park City as an example, and it's, it's, look, it's Utah, right? But it's also open season. It was, it was bustling. Even the bars were open as an example. At very strict kind of limits, occupancy limits, but they were open, the streets were full. So Ward answered the question, unless we're willing to enforce things, we cannot expect lodges and small front business owners and their front desk people to try and enforce them.
Sam?
Yeah, so we live in a capitalist society and viable businesses are not supposed to be failing. Things like the traveler affidavit just put like a crutch in our businesses and hotels and our whole economic ecosystem. We didn't enforce it and it was an idealistic approach that proved to not be effective. I think a better approach would be more, like I said, I'm a pragmatist, a pragmatic approach. We work with the hotels, we work with the Airbnbs, we work with anyone coming to town to make them understand that for their safety, for our safety, for everyone's safety. It's great if you get tested before you come. This is what's going to happen if you test positive. Here's the contact tracing purposes. Please box it, this is our box it in strategy. These are the five systems of containment. But let's let our businesses that are viable stay viable, because things like the traveler, traveler affidavit put us on an unfair disadvantage, especially to other resort towns. So I would get rid of it. But, and, and then take a more pragmatic approach to fixing the problem.
Okay. Hi, John. What do you think?
I'm with the consensus here. I'd just like to add that I think the affidavit was a disincent incentive for people to travel here. I'm not saying it was the wrong thing to do, but I do know several of my friends did not come this winter like they normally do because of the affidavit. Was it necessary? I, you know, I thought it was a good idea when it came out, but yeah, I think it's time to retire it.
Okay. And then Jimbo, that final question, I know you popped off, but are you in favor of rescinding the traveler affidavit program?
Currently, I'm in favor of that and I thought it was a great idea coming into it because I had clients who complied with it. And they thought it made them feel safer that we were actually trying to do all we could before, you know, getting vaccinated and having people come to Aspen. And so it gave them a sense of security. I do, I'm kind of disappointed we didn't do anything to actually enforce it too much, but it's one of those things that we're learning as we go. And like has been said before, it's like we're in a global pandemic. I don't know about anybody else, but not in my lifetime has this ever happened. And so we should lift up on the affidavit a bit, as long as we are feeling like our numbers are getting to the right spot. That's what I think.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. I've so enjoyed chatting with each and every one of you. I think you would all make wonderful city council candidates or actually council people. Thank you so much for caring about Aspen and our community that you're willing to put yourself out there through squirm nights and interviews and Accra interviews. I know most of you have families. And I know that you're taking time away from your families, but you're doing it on behalf of community. And for that, we're also very grateful. So thank you. Good luck. I just want to remind everybody, early voting is open. Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00. There's a drop-off box again for contact-free voting at City Hall. March 2nd, election day, voters may vote from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at City Hall. All-in-person voters must bring a valid government issue ID. My fingers are crossed for all of you. Thank you so much for joining us today and I look forward to working with a couple of you for sure.
Debbie, thank you. And thank you Accra for being an active partner in getting us through this COVID-19 and you individually for the awards that you've received. Thank you so much for Accra.
Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie.
Bye, you guys.
Ciao, y'all.
Ciao.